Right, so we are now broadcasting live on YouTube. So I welcome everybody to this full council meeting. Before we begin formal proceedings on the full council agenda, councillors, I was informed and the sad passing of councillor Gordon Thurston of Head and Town Council a couple of weeks ago. And I would like to hold a minute's silence now in memory of Gordon. And I've written to the town clerk at Head and Town Council, passing on our condolences to everybody there. But if we can just take a minute's silence now to remember Gordon. He was a stalwart of the local government sector, worked incredibly hard for his local community and passionately, and was a representative on Ayrnica and also NALC as well. So I just want to take this moment now to remember Gordon. Thank you. Okay, thank you everybody for observing that. And now we move on to the full council agenda. So first and foremost, item one, I need to explain to everybody that we are being livestreamed on YouTube via Zoom. And if I can remind everybody of the protocol in terms of using remote technology, what I would like to do in this meeting. So first and foremost, everybody needs to go on to mute. And then I would like everybody, when you are wishing to speak, to raise your hand via Zoom. So you need to click the button to raise your hand, and that will register on the screen with me. And it makes it much easier to see who's wanting to speak and in sort of what order as well. It makes it a lot easier for that to happen. So I'd like to do that. And then I'm just going to carry out a roll call of all of the councillors that are present for the minutes. So obviously, I'm here. I've got councillor Hopkins, councillor Boynton, councillor Jack, councillor Johnson, councillor Astell P., councillor Horsley, councillor Willis, councillor Wildy, councillor Tucker and councillor Dow. That's that one done. So item two, to receive apologies for absence. Have we received any, town clerk?
We haven't received any apologies, Mr Mayor.
Okay.
Today, just before the meeting.
Right, okay, thank you. Yeah. Councillor Hopkins breaking the protocol that I just set out immediately. But we will go over to you, councillor Hopkins, anyway.
Sorry, Mr Mayor. I believe councillor Pinder did try and send in some apologies. I'm not sure if they're looking, maybe not got through to the clerk. But yeah, she's got a meeting with some people in America. So unfortunately, their timings, it's all on US time. That has meant that her work has taken away this evening.
Duly noted, thank you councillor Hopkins. Councillor Tucker?
Like to be the second to break your code protocol, Mr Chair. Do apologize. On my system, I can't find my button. So if somebody could show me where my button was, I can have a choice of chat, share screen, record or reactions.
The participants? Yeah, on the participants section.
Yes.
It comes up with the column on the right hand side on my screen, and it says raise hand there.
Excellent, thank you very much indeed.
Everybody? Yeah, is that?
Found it, excellent.
Councillor Willis, have you found it?
No, my participants doesn't say anything like that.
Right.
And where it usually is, I know where it usually is, and it's not there.
Right.
I'll just wave my hand.
Okay, yeah, we'll do a hybrid system this evening. And then if people want to give it a try out for the next one, then that probably would be the best.
I don't know why it won't work for this one.
Okay, not to worry at all, not to worry. Okay, so declarations, to record declarations of interest by any member of the council in respect of agenda items listed below. Members declaring interest should identify the agenda item and the type of interest being declared. Any to be declared. No, thank you all. Next, item B, to note dispensations given to any member of the council in respect of the agenda items listed below. Any dispensations now. Okay, so move on then to item four, to confirm and sign the minutes of full council held on the 19th of October 2020. These seem pretty accurate to me. I'll move them from the chair. We'll have a second for that, please. Councillor Willis, thank you. Then item five, to confirm and sign the following committee minutes. Five A, the personnel committee held on the 27th of October 2020. Another present, yeah councillor Jack, thank you. And councillor Astell Senior is seconding those minutes. Thank you. Was you wanting to say something, councillor Hopkins? Yeah.
Just a point, Mr Mayor. In my supporting documents, it's down as a third of November meeting on the minutes, but as the 27th of October on the agenda.
Yeah, sorry, I should have mentioned that when I came to that because I have had a discussion with the town clerk earlier today about that very issue. And it's simply because the meeting was originally scheduled for the 27th of October, but due to clashes and holidays, et cetera, that it wasn't able to take place on that date. So it was moved to the following week of the 3rd of November. It just wasn't adjusted on this agenda, but it is correct on the minutes document itself. So thank you for pointing that out because I should have mentioned that when I came to it. So we'll move on to five B, planning property and services committee held on the 3rd of November 2020. Proposed by councillor P. Astell and seconded by councillor Johnson. Everyone okay with those, yeah? Five C, the policy committee held on the 9th of November 2020. Proposer for those, please. Councillor Johnson and seconded councillor Horsley. Thank you. Councillor Hopkins?
Sorry, Mr Mayor, on these, we just wanted to raise, as far as my supporting documents from that policy meeting go, the breakdown on the credit card with the £140 to the Beverley Arms, which I assume is for the gentleman from British Toilet Association, wasn't actually presented to that meeting as far as my supporting documents were. So just that it's not accurate to include it in the minutes. I'd like it, you know, it's appreciated for the clarification, but I don't have that in my original supporting documents from that, from that policy meeting.
Right. So, yeah, town clerk, do you want to? Say something on that?
Yeah, I'm just looking with the, on November because it would have been presented in the RBS system. And I think it was, because it was questioned that there wasn't a detailed breakdown. But it would have actually been within the credit card statement.
Yeah, I think that's accurate, Mr Mayor. All I'm saying is obviously we asked about, I think we've asked in the past about a breakdown, and it's really good to have the breakdown. It's just that it wasn't part of the original minutes, so we can't officially confirm it as having been part of the meeting at that point, if that makes sense.
I'm just looking to see where it was in the RBS system. So, but it's, because on the 2-2, on the minute page 71, it's under the Yorkshire Bank credit card. Because within the RBS system, it allows a certain amount of room in which to write information in. And if you'll note there, there's an asterisk next to it, which relates to this asterisk at the back, which details it down further. It's the IT costs, the toilet costs, and the mobile and the storage costs. But just for accuracy of the minute clarity, that's been put in there. Requested.
Okay, I'd just like to go to councillor Johnson, please.
Please unmute.
Need to unmute yourself.
Sorry, if you remember councillor Hopkins and everybody who was at that meeting, this was queried as to what comprised that balance of £222.83. And the clerk did, I itemized, I can't remember the word, but did go through what that £222.83 comprised. And that it did include the man from the British Toilets Association accommodation.
I'm not disputing that fact at all, and I'm not disputing that fact. What I'm saying is that the actual asterisk part wasn't in our original documents. So like, accepting it as part of the minutes makes it not accurate because it wasn't a, it wasn't a document that we saw. The clerk broke it down for us to explain, but it wasn't like included in the documentation that we had, that's all.
So that was actually recorded live on film. That was recorded as to what was actually said at the time. It's difficult to actually include a link to a film though, councillor Hopkins, with respect, when we were actually all quite satisfied with the different items that made up that balance for the credit card. I think that's the point. I think what the clerk has tried to do is try to visualize what we discussed at the time. And that's why it's appeared.
If I can just come in here, you know, quite clearly, this has been added in to further the discussion that was had at the meeting. And if it wasn't added in, then presumably councillors would be asking, well, where is the discussion part of that meeting when we was asking about the credit card payments? Do you see what I'm saying there? So actually, adding it in has enabled better viewing of the minutes. Okay, town clerk?
Mr Mayor, I just wanted to say in councils, it's just to add the clarity because it was discussed at the meeting. And obviously, normally a physical meeting, if we have physical meetings, all the invoices and bills which we present are always available for all councils to see at a meeting. But obviously, while we're meeting remotely like this, it's difficult to get that information out to everybody to see. So we are looking at a way on the RBS system in which we can itemize it coming down, coming in a different, slightly different format. But we thought for clarity, as we're using the RBS system all the time, it was better to actually put something in there than not have anything in there so people can see the amounts that have been spent.
Yes, thank you for that clarification, town clerk. Okay, so, sorry, did we get as far as a proposer and seconder for that? For that, for the minutes?
Yes, Mr Chair, I've councillor Johnson proposing and councillor Horsley seconding.
Right, okay, can we just all vote in favor of those minutes, please? Those present at that meeting? Right, that's in favor and any against? No, right, that's great, thank you for that. So five D, the grants committee held on 16th of November 2020. Can I have a proposer for those minutes, please? Councillor Astell P. and a seconder, please. Councillor Horsley. All those in favor of those at the meeting, please show. Thank you. Those have passed. Five E, planning property and services committee held on the 24th of November 2020. Proposed by councillor Astell, seconded councillor Willis. All those in favor of those present at the meeting, please show. And those are passed, thank you. Right, moving on to note, item six, to note the following working group minutes. At the Beverley Hand Seatic League Working Group held on the 30th of October 2020. Are you wanting to propose those, Claire? Yes, so proposed by councillor Wildy and seconded by councillor Horsley. All those in favor, yeah, these are just to note anyway. So, and the Christmas lights working group held on the 11th of November 2020. There was a noted, I don't think we need to go through that actually for those items. So move on to item seven, my favorite item on the agenda, which is the mayor's announcements. And so the general announcements and correspondence, well, I have to say that I unfortunately haven't been very busy at all with lockdown and a positive COVID test and whatnot. So unfortunately, I wasn't even able to remember the town's war dead on Remembrance Sunday or Remembrance Day. But I did, and unfortunately as well, the deputy mayor was also self-isolating due to being contacted by test and trace. So both of us were out of action. So I decided to ask councillor Healy to represent myself at, and the council obviously, therefore, at the Hengate Gardens to observe the two-minute silence and to lay a wreath on behalf of the council. So that was still carried out by representative of Beverley Town Council. It just wasn't me. So it's, you can say whatever you want about me catching COVID when I finally got an actual engagement to go to after all of these long months of waiting. But, but yeah, so it's, suppose that's fate for you, I gather. But yeah, and there's no other real announcements correspondence that are coming through. But then obviously, there is another item, which is a mayoral event. And I know that you'll all have been probably thinking, well, scratching your heads and thinking, what is this mayoral event that he's got planned? Because surely, he isn't going to be planning some sort of illegal rave at the memorial hall or anything of that caliber. No, 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 what we're doing is, we're going to be holding a virtual digital cabaret evening. So this is going to be on the Friday, the 29th of January. And in actual fact, I might be able to show you the working graphics of what's being put together. Let me just try and find this quickly now. Because it's absolutely brilliant. And what we've done is we teamed up with a company called Rich Tea. And this is made up of two former members of the Hull Pride Board. And they are experts in hosting digital fundraisers. They hosted a really successful one on the eve of Hull Pride this year, of which I gave a little video message to when my capacity is there. It was actually called Through the Queer Hole, which was brilliant. And it's just, it was just a really, really good evening of fun. And it's going to be from eight o'clock in the evening till 11 o'clock. And the Twilight Tower will be more adult-friendly performances. I believe there's going to be some fun happening. So if you can all attend, that will be, you're going to be getting official mayoral invitations coming through. And if you can all dig deep, because it's all going to be in aid of my two charities, which haven't been able to do anything for yet, which are the Lollipop Group, which support LGBT kids in the east riding, and also board for Hull Royal Infirmary. So yeah, it's going to be a really good evening. I'm going to see if I can get this, get this, this sort of poster thing that they've put together. Yeah, I've got it here, and I'm going to share the screen so you can all view this marvelous poster that they've put together. Can you all see that? There we go. So it's Head and Hearts Digital Cabaret, 29th of January 2021 at 8pm. It's going to be hosted by Alex Duffy, Viking FM fame. And it's going to be starring some drag acts, some normal musical sorts of acts and some comedy in there as well. It's going to be free to watch. You watch it via Rich Tea Events page on Facebook, but we'll also be sharing it onto our social media as well, and I'll be sharing it on mine. And you can watch it on there. And then hopefully, we're going to have a text number so that people can text in to donate money. And obviously, the chain gang are going to be invited as well. And hopefully, they're going to dig deep and contribute to the coffers as well. So it's going to be a really good evening. So I'll stop sharing now. And I can see that councillor Hopkins has got her hand raised.
I just wanted to say, it sounds like an excellent event. Congratulations to you to have put in something together in these constrained times. I know how important it is for you to work for your two charities. So it looks, it looks really impressive. I'm very much looking forward to it.
Yeah, it was really important to me to try and do something. And so we've come up with this event. And if we can do, and if we're not in tier three and we're not in tiers or whatever, there's no restrictions, then we can have. My original plan was to have some sort of viewing at the memorial hall or somewhere where we can all watch it, watch it in social distance and obviously like that and stuff. But, you know, alas, probably not going to be able to do that. But if everybody can log on, view it, donate, that'd be amazing. And it's going to be a really fantastic evening. Now, I do have to say that obviously, I am having to pay out a little bit of money. Well, I'm not, but out of the budget line of the mayor is having to pay a little bit of money, which is £1,500. So I'd just like to get authorization just to dot the i's and cross the t's this evening for that. And hopefully, we'll recoup all of that on the evening. But even if we don't, it's still a good evening for everybody to enjoy. But hopefully, we're going to have some profit there so that we can, we can give money back to the charities. So yeah, I'm just proposing that. I'd just like a second for that, just to authorize that so that everything's above board. And councillor Boynton's going to second that for me. Thank you very much. And yeah, so I don't know if anyone's got any comments on that, but I'd just like to, yeah. Councillor Hopkins?
Just from a budget perspective, Mr Mayor, is that from the civic budget, did you say?
Yeah, yeah, it's coming from the civic budget, yeah, yeah. So it's all allocated there anyway for this type of thing. So it's nothing that wouldn't have been spent anywhere. So, so yeah, thank you very much. Believe everybody's, is everybody in favor? Yes, thank you, thank you, thank you. Right, moving on. Two, to receive reports, item eight, to receive reports from councillors serving on external bodies. So brief reports, please, from any councillors who represent the town council on external bodies, if there are anything to report this time. Councillor Astell Senior?
You, Mr Mayor, yes. Ayrnica, as you all know, I'm one of two representatives on Ayrnica. East Riding and North Lincolnshire Local Council Association. It's just undergone as a result of a motion which was passed last year to restructure the east riding section and abolish the four district committees and the creation of one east riding district committee, of which I was made the chairman of that. And Peter Hemmerman, who was a town councillor at Market Wheaton, he was also made the vice chairman. Just like to remind you all, I don't know if you've got the Ayrnica newsletter before you, but NALC have sent Ayrnica again the consultation, which they're opening up again to do with standards in public, in public life. And there's a series of questions there, which you really ought to, all of you, consider. And there is a link to NALC, policycoms@nalc.gov.uk. And that has to be in by the 4th of this next month, 4th of Friday, by five o'clock. And it's important that we as a town council start to take part in this sort of consultation. We've missed out on such a lot of consultation, for one thing or another, COVID and other things, that I'd just like to remind you that we should be taking part in such as this. Because now I can see our town council was somewhere fairly high up the ladder in this section of the east riding and indeed northeast. So just a reminder there, they did, Ayrnica did all its AGM last Thursday, of which I was unable to attend. But it was just a brief AGM. There was no elections held. There was no resolutions proposed or seconded. It was just going through the mill of things. And that's it, Mr Mayor.
Okay, thank you, councillors. I think it'd be really good for us to have an input in them, consultation. And we should take that up, I think. So if we can have that on the agenda for the next full council, and if people can put in their comments, circulate them via email, and then we can, we can have a look at composing some sort of response from the town council to those consultations. Okay?
Mr Mayor, they have to be in by this Friday, yeah, this coming Friday, five o'clock, on the standards in public life.
Right.
There is one other thing, Mr Mayor, that, sorry to come back.
If I can just ask you there, councillor Astell, is it, are we talking, can individual councillors respond? Or is it, or is it councils?
Please email your responses to this consultation so its individual councils can respond.
Right.
By five o'clock this Friday.
Right, so if I can ask, if anybody's interested in responding to that consultation and putting any views, then please feel free to do so. Unfortunately, at this occasion, it's too late now for us to actually have the town council respond formally.
Yeah. Just very quickly, Mr Mayor, there is also back on the agenda again, which is very important, I should have mentioned it, training. The clerk has been sent training events that's going to be taking place. And that's all, they're all via Zoom. And I would urge every member to take part in the training. It's £30 each. And it's £20 plus back for councillors with an electorate less than, than 2,000. So basically it's £30 each member of this town council.
Yeah, yeah, thank you very much, councillor. So we'll come on to that later on, when we, when we come to the agenda item that corresponds with that one. Thank you very much for that anyway. Any other feedback from, from external bodies, from anybody? No, right, okay, we'll move on then to agenda item nine, which is policy procedure adoption. To adopt the following policies is recommended by the Policy and Finance Committee. So nine A is the whistleblowing policy. And I'd like to call councillor Johnson, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. This was fully discussed at, at Policy Committee. Our whistleblowing policy, we felt needed to be updated. Various councillors had input and we are happy to recommend that this policy is adopted as read. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Johnson. Is that a proposal? Yeah. And do I have a second for that proposal, please? Councillor Hopkins. Any comments to be made on this? Lovely, we'll take it to the vote. All those in favour of adopting the policy, please show. And that is unanimous. Thank you very much, everyone. Item nine B is the anti-corruption, anti-fraud and corruption policy. And I'll come back again to councillor Johnson.
Thank you, thank you Chair. Again, this was a recommendation from the, from the town clerk to update our previous policy. It was fully discussed at Policy and Finance with input from all councillors attending that meeting. And we recommend that this should be adopted by full council. Thank you.
And I take that's a proposal. Again, councillor Johnson and seconded by councillor Hopkins. Yes, excellent. And any other comments to be made? No, lovely, again, we'll take it to the vote. All those in favour, please raise your hands now. And that's again unanimous. Thank you very much, everybody. So we move on then to item nine C is the operational plan, the three Ps. So again, I go back to, no, no, this hasn't gone to policy. I'm going to shake a head there. So I've got councillor, but well, we'll go to the town clerk first because this is something the town clerk puts on the agenda and she can explain a little bit more about it.
Yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor. Councillor Healy, who's Chair of Personnel, requested that we put this operational plan on to the full council for noting. So I'll go over to councillor Healy.
Thank you, thank you Helen. This comes on to the agenda following discussions at Personnel earlier this year and at the back end of the summer. When we felt that there was a need to kind of almost take stock and, and reset the direction because there were issues, there were issues around communication. There were issues around protocol. There are issues around the way that we do things. And the staff being asked to, to do things, where councillors are asking the staff to do things. And it wasn't really clear what the lines of communication and responsibility were. So Personnel Committee, well, I, I asked the, had a meeting with the staff as Chair of Personnel Committee and said, right, what are the, what are the good things that we need to do? What are they, what are the behaviours that we need to embed? How do we, how do we make things better? How do we improve communication? How do we take a good council to being a great council? And what are the sorts of things that we should be doing? What are the, the expectations that are, that are placed upon us? And I think we started really with this whole idea of the three Ps. And taking first of all, the, the principles which, which have just been referred to actually. Principles of public life, the Nolan principles, which, which were first muted many, many years ago, I think about 15 years ago or something. With these sort of headlines of selflessness and integrity and objectivity and accountability and honesty, et cetera. And saying, look, these are the ideals that we want to live by. And how do we, how do we, how do we practically achieve that? What are the roles of the officers? What's the governance about? What does the councillors do? What does the officers do? Where is the division? And let's just kind of reset where, where we're going to be. And so the staff came forward, the officers came forward with some practical issues around, around this, which are in this report, which we brought to Personnel. Things like the meeting dates, I'm going to go through all of this because you've, you've all had it there. I'm just really giving you an overview. But things around the meeting dates, how do we, how do we, how do we have effective meetings? In the past, we've got other meetings which were sort of thrown in. And it seemed to be a situation where the staff weren't able to deal with it. We were asking them to do too much. We only have so much, so much time, they only have so much time. And so how do we get the most out of that time that we've got? So in this document, there are certain sort of headings around there, around the sort of the meeting dates, around how we structure the meeting dates, about when meeting agendas are submitted and those kinds of things. And, and it goes through there with a, with a whole host of things to try and get better utilisation of officers. As I say, I'm not going to go through each one in, in particular, but there's some general principles there around how we practically do this. There's some things there around general communications in the office and reception, when the telephones will be answered, for example. How we deal with the public in normal times. And, and, and also, you know, allowing the officers to complete the tasks appropriately in a timely manner. Because many things have been put on to officers, which frankly have not been acceptable, in, in my view. The officers are there to do a job for the council. And we have had a situation, I believe, where life's been made very, very difficult through requests coming in. Requests coming in which have got no proper purpose, not necessarily from councillors. But the bottom line is that this staff are here to serve the council properly. And they needed to be, people need to understand what they're there for and what the role of the officers are. And it's very easy for them to get deflected when somebody comes in with a request which sets them down a path which is in nobody's interest to go. We will provide information and we have a duty to do that and we will do that. We are transparent as a council. And this, of course, was confirmed by, by the internal auditor. And, and, and we passed off the AIGAR. But there are certain occasions when councillors get, officers get deflected on a certain path. And we need them to, to be assertive and, and to, and for councillors and members of the public to understand that the officers will deal with their requests. But it has to be done in a way that takes into account all the other issues that they're having to deal with as well. So there's some comments there on general communications. There's some comments there on the civic role of the council and how the civic year operates. There's something on there, of course, on the allotments, because we have a duty and powers around allotments. Again, I'm not going to go into all of them in there, but they're all there clear to see. So in, in a sense, this is like resetting the thing. So that it's very, very clear what the protocols are, how we expect the staff to be treated. And, and the general modus operandi for the way that we do things. Because that's sort of the Personnel Committee are concerned. We've got great officers. We want to support our officers. And the time has really come for us just to sort of put out and spell out where we think we need to be. So, so this has been, this has been led, I guess, by officers in the way that it's clear for, I think, good collaboration. So I brought this to this meeting for councillors to discuss. It's not been to policy or anything like that. It's an opportunity here for, for you all to, all of us to sort of see how we feel, how the Personnel Committee feels this should be moving forward. And we put it to this meeting with a recommendation to approve it. So I would like to move that this modus operandi is adopted. And that the three Ps, professionalism, politeness and patience should be the byword for the way that we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Healy. So this, for me, seems very straightforward. I think it's a very, very thorough document. Do I have a second then for, for the proposal, please? Councillor Boynton, thank you. Any other comments from the meeting on this? Councillor Hopkins?
Yeah, I just had a few queries because it seems like some of the points raised here should more probably be something that's, that's kind of fed into the policies that Policy Committee is dealing with. And I was also, where there's things like, for example, finance reconciliations being signed off on a quarterly basis and then meetings held quarterly, is that intended to be a minimum recommendation? Or a recommendation to completely reduce the number of meetings? I'm, I'm just a bit unclear on that. And like I say, it seems like some of these would be better, something that Policy Committee would then feed into the other various policies. You know, for example, the, the social media and website, that should be something that's fed into the council's social media policy rather, if you see what I mean, Mr Mayor. Like that, that it's a good document, but it feels like it's a document where what should be taken from it is, is stuff that gets fed into our policies. The various separate ones.
I, I do see that. I, I see this document more of a document than a, than a policy. And I think it's a working document for us all to, 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 to look at and to abide by and to sign up to. And obviously the policies of the council remain the same. This doesn't supersede the social media policy or any other policies that we've got and, you know, regulations that we've got. This complements them, I think, because this enables us, this gives us a framework for the operation of the council, for both councillors and officers to know exactly where we are, exactly where we stand and how we should be operating ourselves and conducting ourselves and the operation of the council as a whole. So I don't think it supersedes any one policy, councillor Hopkins. I think it complements the policies. And in, in terms of the, the policy and finance stuff, actually, we, we should only really be dealing with finance quarterly because then you get a better picture of things. That's the finance stuff. Councillor Johnson would probably want to come in on this. And, and quite right, too, she, you know, the, the finance stuff's dealt with quarterly. And then you have policy meetings which deal with policy stuff in between those finance meetings, which deal with finance stuff every quarter, if you see what I mean there. But yeah, on my list, I've got town clerk first though, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. The guidelines and the recommendations in there that were discussed at the Personnel Committee with the members of the Personnel Committee. And they, they do actually, they are actually in line with the financial regulations and with standing orders as well. Ways of operation, the social media policy. So the policies are already there. And quite rightly, you said that these actual operational ways actually complement and balance and go with those regulations and policies already, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, town clerk. Councillor Johnson?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Yeah, I'd just like to reiterate really what the, what the town clerk has already said. Perhaps under finance and policy, it could just be worded slightly differently to indicate the fact that, that it's the financial aspects that need to be dealt with as we have reiterated within our, within our, our financial regulations. Rather than stating that Policy and Finance Committee meetings need to be quarterly. Which I think it just needs to be worded slightly differently. But, but yes, the town clerk is absolutely correct in what she said. And indeed what, what councillor Hopkins has said in that we've already incorporated this into our latest finance regulations. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Johnson. Councillor Healy, please.
Yeah, thank you Chair. Yes, I think you, you're right in a sense that this is more of a, of a, of a statement of intent, really. It's a blueprint for moving forward. It's probably not a policy in, in that sense, but it's a mantra. It's, it's, it's a set of behaviours that I think as a forward-thinking council, which, which is concerned about building great morale operating between councillors and officers, that this is a set of behaviours, as it says at the top there, to build a positive, motivated organisational culture to get maximum use of staff hours back and by an effort of team approach between councillors and officers. You know, this, this has come out of morale being low, frankly, because things were being done in a haphazard way. Now, at the end of the day, this is, I think, a, a statement that says, in an ideal world, this is how we behave towards each other. And that, you know, having respect for each other and, and recognising where some of the constraints lie with the, with the, with the staff. You know, we have a small staff who focus, we need to focus them as, as councillors on where, where they need to be. But they just felt to, to me and to Personnel Committee that a reset was required. Where we can say, look, these are the intentions, this is where we want to build. We'll fall short sometimes, you know, we're human beings, we do. But if we have a document that sort of says, look, you know, we want to be professional, we want to be polite and we want to be patient with each other and in the dealings of our offices, that's what we want to do. We just want to set that there and just try in our dealings with each other to meet those high ideals enshrined in the Nolan Committee all those years ago. So it doesn't, that's all it does really. It, it's just sort of kind of there as a mantra, as a way to behave. So it's not specifically a policy, the policies all continue to work around it. It's just something that we say we believe in and we will do our utmost to work towards.
Thank you councillor Healy. Councillor Hopkins?
Yes, Mr Mayor. Now I'm just going to be nitpicky. But in the box right at the end, where it says we can be patient, obviously, I think in that instance, it should be patient. But also just in terms of the minutes for this meeting, obviously on the agenda, it got put in as under, coming under policy. You know, I mean, I'm sure the deputy clerk's already on, on top of this. But obviously this is just to recognise it's been a proposal put forward by Personnel. And my final point actually was just, really, it's And my final point actually was just, really, it's, would would personnel like Policy Committee to be kind of sort of using this document and keeping it in mind as we're conducting our policy reviews of the various policies, really, is what I was trying to get at, that that it's not that we're saying that this is an overarching policy, but is it that the kind of the principles in this are that they're wanting us to consult back to this when we're going over a policy, essentially?
This is for everything. This 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 document is for all aspects of the council, for individual councillors, committees, the full council, officers, volunteers, everything. This is, this is, this document is is for, is 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 exactly as councillor Healy has said, it is a mantra that we are all signing up to and that we are all committing ourselves to work towards. And as he says, we are human beings. Sometimes we may fall short, but we are striving towards what is written down in this document. So yes. I would say that that's probably what is expected.
Just to come back on the
Yes, councillor.
Patient word, I mean, the three Ps, the the, I mean, the reason it's patience is because it's a noun which goes with professionalism and politeness. Patient would be an adjective. And in this case, the three Ps are nouns because this is, so they underpin our behaviours. So I do think actually that patience is the correct part of speech for for this, because all of these are virtues expressed expressed in this way. But a characteristic of the noun patience is that we will be patient in the way that we, in the way that we kind of behave to each other. But it's an important point. So I don't want to, don't want to nitpick, but as as you wanted to nitpick, councillor Hopkins, I'll just have a little bit of nitpick.
Well, if really, really I would say that actually it needs to be we can be politeness, which is the noun of polite. So but we won't even go there. So, right, so we have a proposal put forward by councillor Healy, seconded by councillor Boynton. But I believe that that was, the the suggestion was from councillor Johnson was a slight amendment to this in terms of the finance and policy. It needs to be made clear that it's the financial arrangements that are dealt with quarterly. Yes, yes. So that's an amendment to the original proposal. So therefore, I would need a second for the, a second for the amendments, if I may, please. Councillor Hopkins, and then can we all vote, all vote for the amendment? So those in favour of the amendment, please show. Okay, so that much, hold your hands up, please, everybody, so we can count them, because not everybody's, everybody's got their hands up now. Lovely, unanimous. Right, so that's the, so the amended proposal then. We need to vote on that one now. So all those in favour of the amended proposal, please, show. Show your hands clearly, please. And that's unanimous again. Right, thank you for that, everybody. Can everybody please remember to take your hands down so that we're not getting confused? That's much appreciated. Right, so we move on now then to Agenda item 10, which is the grant scheme to adopt and approve the following as recommended by the Grants Committee. 10A, the Grants Policy, which is attached in your supporting documents for your convenience, everybody. And so I will come across to councillor Johnson, is it? Or is it councillor Horsley? Councillor Horsley?
Yes, we've seen various versions of this in different committees and in full council before. There are some minor amendments to clarify certain aspects. But basically, the policy is very much what you've seen before. And I don't think it needs to be gone through again in any detail. If you have any particular questions, by all means, ask.
Okay, so I've got councillor Johnson.
Yes, I I kind of agree with with what councillor Horsley said, but the the big change is with regard to the partnership grants, councillor Horsley. The whole idea of the, of developing partnership grants is that so we become more of a strategic partner with various different organisations in the town. And by doing this, we guarantee that we will give a grant to our partner on a three-year rolling basis. And the importance of that is that various, various bodies do, are able to get grants from other organisations if they can already show they have been allotted grants from other organisations, such as the Town Council. I know various bodies in the town would be highly delighted to to know that they wouldn't have to come back to us on an annual basis and that they would be seen as a partner with the Town Council so that we we would have that strategic way of moving forward. For example, Beverley and Bloom have to come back to us every year to ask for money for plants, which they know we're going to give them. But if we became a strategic partner with them, they could run their own committee meetings, they could decide which plants they want. They would have a grant already and they would know the amount of money they had in that grant. And they would know if it was ongoing on a, on a, on a three-year basis. However, of course, they would have to come back to us and prove that they were fulfilling the the reasons for having that grant, that they were benefiting Beverley by meeting some of the criteria which are listed in item five. So the whole idea of having small grants is to help support organisations who are perhaps just starting out and need a bit of support starting out. The other grants are for one-off grants, but perhaps a little bit bigger. And they would be for established organisations. But I think the important thing is is the establishment of the partnership grants that I think are quite exciting and will make us more of a strategic partner with with some of the key organisations in the town, which which make Beverley what it is. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Johnson. Councillor Horsley?
Thank you, Linda. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The, the, since since we're particularly focused on the partnership grants, we should say that lower down our list, we're actually saying that there won't be partnership grants until about this time next year. Now, the consequence of that is that in practice, people will have to apply for one of the smaller grants. And then we'll have to have special arrangements next year to allow people to upgrade, if that's appropriate.
Right. So right, okay. So we're not going to be giving the partnership grants out with the budget. Because some of these partnerships, some of the, some of the, the organisations that will be benefiting from the partnership grants receive money from the Town Council, which we budget for. And if we're not going to be giving that money until this time next year, then that leaves a gaping hole in. Yeah, okay, please come back. Councillor Johnson?
Well, councillor Hopkins, to be fair, had her hand up first.
Right, okay, thank you for that. Yeah, nobody's, nobody's using the new system, so I'm losing track of everybody. But yeah, if you just want to come back on that point, councillor Johnson, because I know you wanted to comment on that specific point. And then I will come on to councillor Hopkins.
Yes, I did. Yeah, the whole intention is that the partnership grants will start as of the new year and they will be budgeted for. And I think what councillor Horsley is saying, that there will still be small grants and general grants given out to the end of this financial year, i.e. to March 2021. Partnership grants will start after that date into the new year.
Yes. But but the but the fact that somebody has already received a large grant will not prevent them from applying for the, for a partnership grant. It will just mean that they won't get the extra sum of, you know, they won't get the money twice over. But they will move into the new status.
Right. Thank you. Councillor Hopkins?
Yeah, so I think the idea is that what we want to try and do is have the small and general grants. Sorry, we've kind of taken these as separate items, but really, just to discuss them all together, that we would have small and general grants launched essentially by December so that we could still give from the grants this year and this financial year. And that we're double checking on the the legal position on the partnership grants about how exact. I think we're okay on it, but we just wanted to double check on our advice. But the idea would be that we would like, look at that budget for it and and it would be launched as something that's actually given in money in the new financial year. So in the in the 2021 to 2022 financial year for the partnership grants. But in terms of the small and general grants, we're hoping to get those launched as quickly as possible so that they can be covered within, you know, the round this year.
Right. Thank you very much, councillor Hopkins. Deputy Town Clerk, please. You are on mute, Deputy Town Clerk, yes.
Technically, it's the host of the meeting. He doesn't give the option for a little hand in the corner. Yeah, just to clarify for councillors who aren't on grants. The grants that were given a couple of months ago were actually held over from the previous financial year. The meeting at which they should have been considered at the end of the previous financial year couldn't take place because of lockdown started. So all the applications that were considered and were successful recently were actually held over from the previous financial year with the money from that previously financial year covering them. Any applicants that would apply through the new small and general grants would be covered in this year's, this current financial year's grant budget, with then the 2021-22 budget, which councillors will be setting, including the partnerships. And as councillors felt was appropriate, which is appropriate, just to get everything double-checked legally on the partnership grants, because it's the first time we've done anything like that. Hopefully, we, everything should be ready to go online by the end of this week. Just to update councillors, the forms that are, that are here have been prepared. I am also working, I've had a conversation today, I'm also working with Aubergine to look at developing them into a web-based format as well for the future, to enhance accessibility. But until then, we can still go ahead with the word-based versions, which they assist me with to make them more accessible. So everything is in place, Mr. Chair, to start the, to launch the small and general grants. And over the time of applications coming in for them, the committee will look at how to structure the partnerships, get advice on those, and also sort out the other documentation, such as the letter of agreement, the the feedback forms for the small and general, because that won't be required until the decision is actually made. With with 10C of this agenda item, there are the, there's the proposed schedule. So I think in quite a short amount of time, we've managed to pull it all together and hopefully it'll be successful.
Fantastic. Thank you very much, Deputy Town Clerk. I've got councillor Healy, please.
Yeah, thank you. I'm not on Grants Committee, but it was at that point that councillor Horsley made, and I can see why he made it, around the partnership grants, where he said, you know, it's going to be another year. Because in item nine, it's quite clear that partnership grants are tied into the budget, the financial budgeting process. The partnership grant shall be considered at a meeting to be held before the setting of the council's budget for the following financial year. So the question of whether it's in this year's budget or next year's budget is is based really upon when that, when that budgeting process begins. And it's about to begin. So we should be in time for having it this year because we're now about to start thinking about what are we going to be spending our money on next year? So on that basis, I think item nine would suggest that we should be in time to be able to consider some partnership grants for this coming financial year. So we probably don't need to wait a full year, but I can, I can see the point that councillor Horsley is making there. We're not quick about it, that we could, we couldn't miss it. It's got to be tied into the budgeting process, which is kind of January time, isn't it? And we've started to think about it now, really.
Deputy Town Clerk?
Just to clarify that further, the Grants Committee did discuss the idea that applicant, applications could open for partnerships before the end of this financial year. But the actual decision-making process being in March-April time towards the start of the financial year, when the budget will have been set, the next year's budget can start to be used. But it's just to give us a little bit more time to get the legality sorted. So I think that the committee's plan is, within the first couple of months of the new financial year, there will have been a meeting with proposals sent to full council for the partnerships.
The key thing is that we budget for it, though, isn't it? There is a provision made in the budget for partnership grants, even though they've not been approved at that point. We've got to have the money there to to be in the budget. So we need to make sure that that's part of our planning for the budgets and setting the precept and all those things, which is coming up in the next few weeks.
Right. I've got councillor Hopkins first, please.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, just to answer councillor Healy's concerns, we actually discussed this at Grants. And we essentially said that in the normal process, ideally, we'd be looking at budgeting based on what applications we were kind of receiving and expecting to work with. But in the initial first year, that we might set a budget based on some assumptions and see how that, you know, based on the feedback from that in terms of how the, how it went. So that in in, in time for the 2021-2022 financial year, our budget would not necessarily be based wholly off of which grants we were kind of expecting to have a look at. But that in future years, obviously, with it not being a launch year, we'd be able to to think in more detail because we wouldn't necessarily need to have partnership applications only opening just before the budgeting. But rather that they could be open for people to start making applications. We would then have a meeting prior to the usual budgeting process where they would be discussed and we'd then be able to give feedback based on which ones we thought needed approval to the full council. But in this initial year, obviously, you know, that that's not been possible because it's it's kind of still in a launch phase. And as the deputy town clerk said, we just wanted to also make sure that we had all the legalities ironed out and ensured there. Does that answer your query, councillor Healy?
Well, thank you.
Nice. Councillor Horsley, please.
Thank you, councillor Hopkins. That's been very helpful. We should notice, though, that the, the problem in terms of budgeting is more apparent than real in that we would expect anybody who's eventually going to apply for a partnership grant to apply for a large grant, get that, and then have it upgraded at the later stage in this one year because of the problem of of getting everything lined up.
Councillor Hopkins?
Mr. Mayor, I forgot to lower my hand.
All right, okay. Right. So thank you for contributions. Can I have a proposal for the Grants Policy, please? Councillor Horsley, and seconded by councillor Hopkins. All those in favour of adopting this policy, please, raise your hands clearly. And that is unanimous. And that is unanimous. Thank you all. Right. So, um, item B and item C, uh, sorry, no, item B is small and general grant application forms. These all seem straightforward to me. I don't know if we need to have any discussion over this. We apparently do. Councillor Johnson.
We don't need to have any discussion anymore. Um, there was four of us who worked on the, on Policy Committee. Um, and, and however, Matt has done, the deputy town clerk, has done an awful lot of work interpreting our intentions and putting everything into an easy to understand, um, easy to apply for, um, pro forma. So I just wanted to, and as I'm sure we all do, and the four of us all want to do, is to recognise the hard work that, that Matt has done and to thank him for his diligence in in trying to interpret what we meant. Thank you, Matt.
Thanks.
Yes.
Thanks indeed.
Yes, I, I echo those, because it's, it's brilliant, well, brilliantly put together, um, application form, so, um, yeah. Uh, so, uh, yeah, that's brilliant. Thank you very much, Matt. Um, so moving on to item C, is the grant launched to approve the launch of the small and general grant schemes by Friday, the fourth of December twenty twenty. Yeah, do I have a proposal for that, please? Councillor Horsley, seconded councillor Astell. And all those in favour of approving that? And unanimous. Thank you very much, all. Right. Um, sorry, councillor Horsley, you wanted to speak there.
Yeah, can I make just a quick comment? And that is, there will of course need to be supporting documents when we send out these application forms. In particular, I think we want to emphasize the importance of the, of, of the participants being from the Beverley parish, uh, which is the main reason why people failed in their grants last time.
Right, yes, that's the actual people benefiting from what's going to be provided by the money given. Not that specifically the organisations have to be within the parish of Beverley, it's just the people that are benefiting from the work that they'll be doing need to be, yes, right. Yes, that's a good point, councillor Horsley. Thank you for that. Right, um, item eleven, supporting residents to consider how Beverly Town Council may wish to continue supporting residents, especially those who are vulnerable during the ongoing COVID nineteen pandemic over the Christmas and winter period. Councillor Healy.
Yeah, you need to make it up with that one. Um, I think the reason that we want this on here, we, we have discussed, um, previously about the support that we should be giving to residents. And I think this came on the, the back of the, the great work that was done on the Free School Meals, um, project, um, where we, we stepped in to support some of these restaurants and businesses who were putting food parcels together and putting meals together. And we, we came together with that emergency meeting in October to get that sort of happening in half term. And, and because of that, uh, we, we, we embarrassed the County East Riding Council. Um, uh, as, as we stood up in the council chamber and said, not that this is about point scoring in any way, it's about doing the right thing. And their own Conservative councils were putting pressure on them as well to fund free school meals. Uh, and, and just as we'd agreed to do that, lo and behold, the Prime Minister changed his mind. So no doubt influenced by the largesse of Beverley Town Council, changed his mind and decided that, uh, that school meals were going to be funded, not just for, for, for Christmas, because we were going to say, well, look, you know, what could we do in cri- for Christmas? Um, but thereafter as well. But I know that councillors have sort of said, well, look, you know, what, how can we, how can we continue that? Um, and I know that councillor Pinder talked last time as well about we've got reserves and, you know, we should be, we should be using our reserves to, um, for, for the good of our community. Um, and I think that's something that most of us in, in councillors here are, are agreed on. So I don't come really to this with any, uh, firm proposals, I have to say. Um, except that I know that it's the sort of collective will, that we try to do something. Um, but we, I, I think we probably need to sort of try and articulate what that is. Um, and, 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 and try and get some, some sort of actions in, in motion, because you know, we, we talked about, well, what can we do with the run up to Christmas? What can we, it's a run up to Christmas now, it's the first of December tomorrow. Um, but what about other groups as well, uh, as, um, and we talked about the elderly groups and, and, and that. We've done things in the past, obviously, with the care homes in, uh, COVID, with, with, with the face masks and all of those sorts of things. But it was an opportunity, I think, to, to just give everybody an opportunity just to, um, you know, to, to sort of throw some thoughts around and may, and maybe we can sort of try and articulate what it is that we want to do and bring it forward to actually get something moving in the future. Uh, so it's, it's a general discussion item. So I'm going to shut up there and let others speak. I think councillor Willis has a hand up, so maybe you should have a go next and.
Yes, thank you very much, He- Mr, councillor Healy, Mr Healy. No, councillor Healy, yes. Um, councillor Willis.
What bothers me at the moment is, is the mental health of people who are particularly, who are on their own, and most of those will be the elderly or will be the vulnerable. I'm not quite sure what we can do. I do know individuals on the council are trying to support them by phone calls and things like that. I don't know if we can do any particular policies, maybe something we need to think about, because I suspect um, that he's going to be ongoing into the new year until the vaccine comes on. And I think still you'll find some of the elderly seem to be very, very scared of doing things, even when they're allowed to come out and go to places. I know churches have said a lot of their elderly members, even though they could go, are not attending because they're scared to come out. And as I say, I'm not sure what we can do. Um, it just bothers me.
Hmm. Thank you, councillor Willis. Councillor Horsley.
It's, it strikes me that there's one thing we could inquire about. Uh, and that is, we of course are not allowed to make any, uh, loan or grant to an individual. But the Holland East Riding Credit Union are allowed to make such, such loans. Uh, and I wonder whether it would be worth talking with the Holland East Riding Credit Union and seeing whether a significant deposit from us, say fifty thousand, would allow them to, uh, uh, look at, at loans in a slightly more generous light for people in Beverley.
Right. Councillor Willis.
That sounds to me like a good idea, because we wouldn't be giving the money away, it'd be in a saving thing. Um, but we don't need it at the moment, so I, I think it would be a good idea. I'll endorse that.
Councillor Jack.
Sorry, I don't think as a council, we're a bank for, we need to think this through a bit, a bit more of that. But like, when I say haphazard discussion, just things just coming forward from the floor, to put money, sort of talking fifty thousand into a credit union or whatever, is a very, very big step, I'm afraid, for the council. And we need to be, we need to be looking at these things properly and in a, in a structured sort of fashion. And it just frightens me that these figures are just bandied about like that as, you know, I'm horrified, really.
Right. Uh, councillor Astell.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Yeah, I don't think there's anything that we can physically do, uh, as a council. Uh, we haven't got the wherewithal and, um, it has been said in the past, we are volunteers ourselves. All that said, um, I was thinking more in terms of, uh, looking, uh, towards a food bank again. Uh, and, um, the, uh, getting in touch with the Smile Foundation, of which works closely with the East Riding and the Yorkshire Council. Um, but I don't think we should commit ourselves. Uh, I echo Duncan's, um, um, words, um, that we should commit ourselves as heavy as what's been suggested, um, with the credit union. Um, I think we need to look at it seriously, uh, because don't forget, Mr Mayor, um, I would be, as a, as an individual councillor, be looking to save, uh, next year on the precept by not increasing the precept. And I think we need as much money, uh, in reserves to spend on other things that we may want to do during the next financial year.
Thank you, councillor Astell. Uh, councillor Hopkins.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'd echo, um, the idea about looking towards the, the food bank and to smile as, as, you know, potentially what could we do to support, um, their ongoing efforts. Uh, the other thing might be, is there a way we could, um, ask businesses what they think they might need from us? Not necessarily in this run up to Christmas, but over the next year. Um, you know, obviously many of them will have struggled and one of the ways to kind of help keep our town vibrant is what can we do to support, um, businesses in that environment and other organisations as well? Um, in terms of, of things that the town council could offer. Um, just getting in early with them and asking them what kind of things they'd be looking for would probably be a, a useful measure to take, I think.
Yeah, thank you, councillor Hopkins. Uh, councillor Boynton.
Unmuted. There we go. Um, yeah, I've kind of echoed the thoughts that Duncan and, and Peter mentioned about not committing ourselves to, to big amounts of funding at, at this moment in time. Um, I have listened to some of the comments, you know, Smile Foundation, you know, the mental health, which obviously I support very much. I'm just conscious that others, other organisations are already looking at supporting them, whether that's nationally or, or locally. Um, and for the risk of repeating myself, which I'm, I'm sure I do quite often, um, sometimes I think it's getting our own house in order, getting that, you know, getting ourselves a, the town council office, which in turn will help us support the, the local community, such as we think back to the beginning of the pandemic, where, you know, the, the food, the food donations were really high, but they didn't have enough storage space. Well, that's potentially something the town council could, could do. I just think there's a lot, you know, what we could do with our own space. It's just, we need to, we need to be acting for the future. So, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Boynton. Uh, town clerk.
Um, just listening to those points there, Mr Chair, from the councillors. Um, we as a council would be able to lend money to anybody, it would be a donation. Um, because we would be permitted to lend money as a council, not a bank, um, with, with, with view to the credit union. Um, with view to, um, the food bank, which we've, or we have already helped. Later on in the agenda, there is an item from the East Riding Food Poverty Alliance, where they've got some arrangements in place, where the town council are going to be helping and storing some emergency packs of, um, food parcels for single people, for families and various things, where they'll be able to have a telephone number to get access to an emergency food parcel, should they need it. Um, and that's working with the town council on a, on a smaller scale, but still valuable work. And where it was councillor Hopkins was saying about, um, businesses and what can we do to support businesses and thinking ahead to support businesses. Um, some of the things that we can do, because again, it's, you can't, you can't give directly to businesses. But what we can do is make the town look more pleasant to, um, be shopping around. Um, so we can be looking at the, um, hanging baskets, we can be looking at flower towers, um, which I know that, um, Planning Property and Services and councillor Astell, um, and those, um, committees have been looking at. Um, and enhancing Beverley, um, within the town centre.
Thank you, um, town clerk. Uh, councillor Horsley.
Yes, uh, um, the, several councillors have slightly misunderstood what I was saying. Uh, what I was saying was that we, that we didn't do anything at this moment, but simply talked with the credit union to find whether by making an ordinary deposit with the credit union, which wouldn't reduce our reserves at all, uh, but would, uh, increase the sum they had available, whether that might allow them to be, uh, to take a fresh look at loans to individuals in the Beverley area. I was only suggesting that that was a, a route worth exploring, not that, not that we should do it straight off.
Thank you for the clarification, councillor Horsley. Um, councillor Johnson.
Uh, thank you, um, Chair. Um, I'd just like to address one, one or two of the points that, that people have made, if I may. Um, I think councillor Hopkins is absolutely right in that, um, businesses do need to be supported, but East Riding and Yorkshire Council, working on behalf of the government, has given out absolutely thousands of pounds in different loans and, and grants. Um, and, uh, we're, we're constantly being reminded that, um, there is money available for, for businesses of, of almost every size to help them get through this pandemic. Um, so, um, I, I think she could be, um, assured that almost every business would be able to get some support if, if they needed it. Um, I actually quite like the idea of, of, um, opening an account at the credit union. And, um, that would also attract interest, although not a lot, but it, it would in fact increase the amount of money available to be loaned to people through the credit union. Um, just to say as well, Beverley Against Poverty, until we went into lockdown, we're planning to cook meals and serve them from the back of Tolgapple Church. Um, and that was all organised, and they were going to do that three or four days a week with, um, with donations from, uh, from people. Um, and of course that had to stop because we've gone into lockdown, but they will be doing that again as soon as they are allowed to. So Beverley Against Poverty, we could perhaps support Beverley Against Poverty, because they did have what they were hoping to do, as well as serving meals from the, from the porch, was also to encourage people who could deliver them to people who could naturally get out. Um, and I think that's something that's been lacking recently in Beverley. Um, a kind of a, a localised meals on wheels service. There used to be one run by Riverside Cafe, and since the owners retired from Riverside Cafe, the people who took over are not able to run this same service. And I know it, it really is something that a lot of people do miss. Um, with regard to, um, tidying up Beverley, then, um, and then we must also recognise not only the, the, the hard work that Beverley and Bloom have been doing and that councillor Astell has been doing organising planting and flowers and what have you, um, to make Beverley look lovely. Also, the, um, the, the Beverley Christmas Lights Committee that's making Beverley look absolutely fantastic. Every time I go into Beverley, I try to play, spot the new set of lights, because it's really starting to look Christmasy out there. Um, and, and there's also a, a clean up campaign as well that we're running, trying to get, get some of the bins off the streets that shouldn't be there anymore, that seem to have, um, replicated a little bit like Tribbles, if you know your, your Star Trek, um, and seem to be spilling onto pavements when they shouldn't be there anymore. So there, there is quite a lot, um, going on, and if, if that can encourage people to come into Beverley, um, that would be, that would be fantastic. But my, my bid would be, can we support Beverley Against Poverty a little bit more? Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Johnson. Um, councillor Healy.
Thank you. Yeah, it's been a good discussion. Um, and, uh, thank you for, for the contributions. thank you for the contributions. I agree certainly with councillor Johnson, businesses can get their hands on money. The Conservative Party managed to get its hands on 10K of money that was intended for Covid relief. So businesses are getting support. I think the credit union is an interesting idea. Now, we do have an investment strategy, of course, for our reserves. It might be worth a conversation, asking the clerk to make inquiries. You have to think about risk as well, but clearly how secure are any investments in there? But I think it would be worth having an initial conversation. I think many of the things that we do, you know, it's hard to sort of sit down and say, well, and I agree with everything that's been said. We're not a bank and we can't give money away like that. But we have obviously been able to react to certain things in a positive way. And it's impossible to sit down and plan, you know, what we're going to do in some respects, because it is reactive. And we have reacted really well on some of the things that we've supported this year, like those care homes, for example, unlike the free school meals. And we've got to be realistic though about what we can as a council, what we can and cannot do. I think people just need to know that we're there. And one of the things that there with councillors in some of our board is to send people a message, a little Christmas card as the word councillors. And in it, we actually say that one of the most important things that councillors can do at this time is just to let people know that they're not alone. And that it's our job as elected representatives to help in whatever way we can. We may not be able to fix every problem, but we'll always do our best. And then we just go on to say that the council has set up this special helpline, a 3931 number. And we've also sort of, you know, said, look, and here's our numbers because we need to be transparent. And I think that that's probably something that, you know, it's like a message that because the town council is held in great affection by the citizens in Beverley. And there's great interest in it and great interest in what we do, great interest in our civic tradition, great interest in our democratic processes. The turnout that we have in elections is really good because it matters to people. People are often confused about the differences between the East Riding Council and the town council. But, you know, being there for people is probably the most important thing. So I think there's some interesting ideas that we could sort of pursue there with, perhaps taking a question around the credit union and pursuing that. But being mindful, of course, of that needs to be part of an overall investment strategy. And we wouldn't want to make any decisions on that until we'd sort of considered that. And we have already made some decisions on policy and finance. And doors, I think, by this town council where we should put some of our investments. So I don't think there's necessarily a great conclusion to be drawn, but I think, you know, that's the direction of travel that we're going in. So it's been a helpful discussion and that's the end of it. But you may want to say more, but it's precisely the sort of input that I think we needed from everybody.
Thank you councillor Healy. councillor Hopkins and then councillor Gallow.
Thank you, Miss Matt. I'd like to sort of echo councillor Johnson's proposal or maybe make it a proposal. I wasn't sure if it was one or not. But if we could actually just reach out as a town council to Beverley Against Poverty, to the Food Bank and to the Smile Foundation and see what sort of support that we could offer, like if we could just make a direct inquiry to them about what would be useful from us. Obviously, the town clerk will know about what kind of limitations we might face, but it'd be good if if we could just reach out to them and sort of just directly ask what kind of support can we offer? And, you know, it's really heartening to hear we we already can do some things to an extent. I think in terms of the sort of what can we do to support businesses? I wasn't thinking so much in terms of the loans, because as councillors have pointed out, there's plenty of that from various places that businesses can reach out to. But more like what the town clerk was suggesting about what ways can we make the town more welcoming for people so that when things really get moving again, you know, it's a nicer place for people to visit and bring their business.
Thank you councillor Hopkins. councillor Gallow.
If I may, just apologise for my temporary disappearance. I took a lady in a wheelchair to the hospital about four hours ago. And she had every right to believe I'd take her home later, to be honest. I can only apologise that I had to dip out. I do apologise, but it would be churlish if councillor involved in hypothermia drama.
Thank you councillor Gallow. councillor Astell and then we'll wrap this up. You are on mute councillor Astell.
Sorry, Mr Mayor. Yeah, just to say, Mr Mayor, that we won't be meeting again now until January. And so if we're expecting to do something before Christmas, tonight's the night.
Right. Okay. I'm just looking at time and the fact that we've got a number of agenda items to get through within 21 minutes. If anybody's got any concrete proposals, then please propose them now. But, you know, I don't really want to go into having a brainstorming session on what we can do now. I think we've had a good discussion on it. But if anybody's got a concrete proposal of something real that we can do before Christmas, logistically and operationally, taking those into consideration as well, then please propose it now. councillor Astell.
Yeah, well, I'd like to propose then in that case, Mr Mayor, that we take £2,000 each for Beverley Against Poverty and the Beverley Food Bank as a donation to those two organisations who are doing sterling work throughout the Christmas period.
Right. Do I have a second for that proposal first and foremost, please? councillor Johnson, thank you. councillor Tucker.
In terms of what the town clerk was saying and making the town centre more attractive, I think something we might think about doing, not necessarily before Christmas, but after Christmas, is putting a budget to one side. I walked around the town three weeks ago, thinking I'd take some photographs and there were, I thought about a dozen, 12, 13 shops vacant. There were 21 and looking fairly ropey at the moment. There will be more, I think, in the new year. And I wondered if we could take an example from what had been done at the old Wilco site and put some Beverley posters in those windows, advertising various things, the attractiveness of the town, illuminating, you know, things that we would like people to see. And also reducing the unsightly look of empty buildings and the image that that sends out. I think that wouldn't cost a vast amount of money and we could make sure we had the Beverley Town logo on the bottom of it.
Excellent. Thank you councillor Tucker. Can I suggest that that goes on to a subsequent PPS agenda and then more, we can delve into that one a little bit more and investigate different avenues. Is that okay? But taking on the seconded proposal then from councillor Astell on donating £2,000 to both Beverley Against Poverty and £2,000 to the Food Bank. Can I have a vote on that, please? All those in favour, please show now. And that's unanimous. Thank you very much. Is that everything for that agenda writing? Yes. Right. Okay. Thank you, everybody. Moving swiftly on, agenda item 12, honorary freemen/freewoman 2019/20. So this is to consider how best to present the honorary freemen/freewomen who were selected in the 2019/20 municipal year with their certificates, due to the ceremony having been cancelled because of the Covid-19 pandemic. councillor Jack, the floor is yours.
Yeah. Could I suggest that we put out a press, send a certificate out to the recipients of that? And also put out a press release stating that what we have done and also stating that when situation returns to normal, there would be a proper ceremony where they were presented with it in a public forum at a suitable time in the future. But just take that forward because they've been left in limbo, I suppose, for for a year and a half. Well, they knew last November, didn't they, that they'd actually received it and, you know, it should be made public. And that would be my proposal.
Thank you very much councillor Jack. councillor Healy.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I guess I'm happy to second that. I think that we nominated a couple of people last year and they've not really had the benefit of a proper little ceremony. And I think it would be very fitting to, I mean, I think even fitting, visible to sort of have a ceremony, but explain to them that, look, you know, here is a certificate. We want them to have it. But the only reason they've not had it so far is because we wanted to make it special for them. But we still intend to do that. And that if we, hopefully, God willing, are able to have a proper mayor making ceremony in May 2021, that that would be a nice occasion for those people to come and formally receive their certificates for their 2020 achievement, along with any other people that we recommend for honorary freemen and women in 2021. So I would second that proposal.
Right. Thank you very much councillor Healy. councillor Astell. Yeah. What's happening? Aha, you hadn't lowered your hand. And I'm guessing that that's what Dennis and councillor Boynton hadn't done either. So yeah, I was going to be coming on to you next day, yes. Right.
I was there with a speech ready.
Right. Okay. Well, you still need to lower your hand councillor Healy. But we will move on to the vote then.
If I may, Tom, shall I, Mr Mayor, should I say? I support what's been said. I do think it's very important that we, you know, we do hold historic meetings as such. Just a little nice touch possibly is when we go down a tier, possibly to tier two, maybe if Mr Mayor and Deputy Mayor go and deliver them in full galia, it might be a nice little touch as well, just to add that on. Thank you.
Yes. Good shout there councillor Boynton. Yeah, so we'll move this one to the voters. I think it's pretty straightforward. All those in favour of councillor Jack's proposal for that? Yeah, that's unanimous. Thank you very much. So councillor 13, agenda item 13, councillor training. To consider councillor attendance at finance training sessions, please see attached. So these are really good sessions. I encourage everybody to sign up to them. If you are interested in going to the training sessions, please, can you email the town clerk? Is that probably the best way about doing it, Helen? Yeah, if you want to go, they're open to all councillors. We've got the money set aside for that to happen. So if you're wanting to go, then please email the clerk and she will add you on to the to the training sessions there. They're really good for Mernica. They always do a good show and they're very, very informative. councillor Hopkins.
Yes, sorry, Miss Matt. These ones, are they, they're all the ones for the next year? Sorry, I'm just checking, I'm looking at the right thing. My agenda's gone a bit odd. Is it all next year, these ones?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, brilliant. Thank you. Sorry, it's just my agenda's gone on my computer, so I couldn't see the item.
Fine, don't worry about it. Yeah, so they're all next year. So if you want to have a look through the dates, select a date and one that's suitable for you and then email the clerk on to which session you'd like to join for that training. Item B, to consider working with Mernica to arrange bespoke training on general council practices. I'll come to the town clerk in a second. This is something that we've discussed before about having bespoke training and in Alan Barker to come and deliver training, whatever we want, whether it be a Q and A session or whether it be an actual specific part of the council operations. It would be really good to have that. And the town clerk's put this on, I think she's going to report on that.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. With regards to this, we've been looking at some training for quite some time now anyway. And how was best to do it? And while we've been in this Covid situation, it's, we've still been wondering on which best way to do it. And I think it's looking at the roles and responsibilities. Some of it is with bringing it in line with some of the things that we discussed earlier on. And also some of the future things as well, because now the Zoom meetings and virtual meetings, there's quite a lot of new things actually that's coming into play. And we could see from Mernica, from what they're doing and the work they're doing with NELF as well. And I think it would be quite useful to have a couple of evening sessions booked in with Barker to look at the future developments within councils of what we need to get a plan together for training, because we will be having another by-election. So there will be councillors joining. And just really start with, you know, like a basis for training really, just on general things with a Q and A as well. I think that's really important because, you know, we've got some people that are new councillors and now they've been doing it for a couple of years. And I think it's quite important just to be proactive on this. We have the money and the budget to do it. And I know councillor Astell Senior has been talking with Mr Barker and I've been talking with Mr Barker as well and he is willing to be able to offer this. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, town clerk. It's something we've discussed before. I think it'd be really good to do this, to do this training. Alan's fantastic, so he'd be well up for it. councillor Tucker.
I think it's an excellent idea. And I think the bespoke training is something we should really go for, following on from what councillor Healy was discussing in terms of proposals for free peas and improving our performance. I would have thought that might have made the basis for a beginning. And I think working on that as to how, as we are now, a good council can become an excellent council would be a really good starting point. I suspect that once we got into that, other training that would be needed might emerge. So rather than start on something very specific, my recommendation would be we'd take a broad-based approach to begin with.
Yeah. Thank you councillor Tucker. Yes. So if I can, if we can leave this with the clerk to organise, we've already got it allocated there, this money. So we've already agreed it previously, presumably. So if we can leave the town clerk to organise this, to have discussions with Alan and to come back to us with some ideas and, you know, some dates, hopefully, that'd be great. Thank you. Yes, Helen. Yes, did you want to, sorry, town clerk, did you want to come in? Yeah, that's brilliant. Right. Fantastic. So moving on to item 14, other correspondence, and the following additional correspondence. A Yorkshire and Bloom Certificate of Recognition 2020. Now, this is something that we really should be proud of, because this has come from Britain in Bloom. And it recognises us for our floral displays this year. And the fact that we actually managed to do something. Because a lot of towns haven't done anything. And naturally, the floral displays this year, we've, we've, we've enhanced, you know, we've, we've, we've put the, the flower towers up and everything like that, and the hanging baskets and stuff. And the town has looked absolutely brilliant. And it's, it's a certificate of recognition from Britain in Bloom, of which we was a serious contender to enter this year. So it's really, really something that we all should be very proud of, the fact that we was able to continue and develop and enhance the floral displays throughout the town. So it's, it's brilliant for, for Beverley really. And, and hopefully that stands us in good stead for when we're allowed to re-enter the competition. And I hope that the judges have long memories. Councillor Astell, you are not muted, by the way. Okay. Item B, the Community Hub slash Call ER Information Postcard. Everybody has been sent that. If you can, please share it on your social media and, and distribute out that way. The situation is still really serious here, obviously from Wednesday, we're going to be in tier three. So restrictions are not going to be lifted around these parts. So we all need to work together to, to, to keep the, the virus under control. And we need to keep sending that message out to our residents to keep up the good work of what they've been doing so far in, in sort of bringing down the surge in infections locally. So that's already been sent out, so it should be in your emails somewhere along the way. Okay, that brings me to the end of this full council meeting. And I'll formally draw the meeting to a close at 2024. And now we are going to be going on to the next meeting, which is an extraordinary full council honorary freeman meeting. And so we'll go on to that. There is the, the meeting, the first item on the agenda of this meeting is, well, to receive apologies for absence, but we've already done that. Declarations of interest. Does anybody have any declarations of interest in respect of the agenda items listed below? No.
Is this still being recorded? Have we stopped recording on you?
No, this, this, so what I was going to say was that this is going to be going to closed session, but only when we've voted to go into closed session and then it would be the live stream on YouTube. So, but we need to vote for that first. So that's why I was hastily going through the declarations of interest, if you know, I see what I'm saying there. Right, so, so, to, to record declarations of interest by any member of the council in respect of the agenda items listed below. Members declaring interest should identify the agenda item and the type of interest being declared. None to declare, thank you. And to note dispensations given to any member of the council in respect of the agenda items listed below. And no dispensations, thank you. Right. Item three, to consider the exclusion of the public from the meeting on the grounds that confidential information in relation to the proposal of bestowing the title of honorary freeman shall be disclosed. Public Bodies Admissions of Meetings Act 1960. So the motion is as follows, that the public be excluded from the meeting on the grounds that confidential information in relation to the proposal of bestowing the honour, honorary freeman be disclosed. I've moved that from the chair and do I have a second for that, please? Councillor Gallow and all those in favour, please show.